I'd like to call the order of Lemmister Planning Board for May 20th, 2019, 6:30. In the TA conference room. We have our open public meeting for 25 Tucker Drive by site plan approval.
And can you start by saying that this meeting is being recorded by LATV and the minutes are being taken by Stephanie Witt?
Okay. Okay, Anthony, go on.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Cleese. I'm with the NIB associates here on behalf of Oxford Partners. Also here is Dan Rossmann from Oxford Partners as well. I have some GIS images, familiar with the area we're at. It's a 25 Tucker Drive. I've always known myself growing up as Tucker Warehouse Building. I don't know anything else but...
Yeah, I'll pass it over there.
Thank you.
Did we get the handle also? Did we get the handle?
Unnecessary.
No.
No?
According to the paperwork...
Excuse me, ma'am. This is a hearing. You direct everything through the chair, okay? He will be allowed to make his presentation on what he has and then we will open it up to the public. Everybody will get a chance to be heard, okay? They'll have their questions, okay? Thank you very much.
So these plans I'm just passing out are some updated plans based on similar comments there.
We killed a couple more trees tonight.
Absolutely. So again, it's the old Tucker Warehouse site, that 25 Tucker Drive. Pass out the GIS there. So on that GIS image, you'll notice at the very end of Tucker Drive, I have the reference here on this plan. You come up Tucker Drive from New Lane Castle Road 117, you come up this way. And then in that 90-degree turn of Francis Street, or Francis Street, we're eventually going to be near Altamonte Street. So right at this 90-degree turn is one of the, is the entrance to the kind of loading area, the truck access. We'll come into Tucker Warehouse to access loading docks in here. So if you see on the GIS, there's one little patch of vegetation, a little square here. That's the nature of our site, is up to this area. Right at the end of Tucker Drive, up in that spot here. So we have a big building here on the right, sprawls all the way over here, loading docks over here. And then we have Hudson Real Estate, business there. And so what the project is, we're proposing 110 new parking spaces to be built in that rectangular square area there. Exactly. Yeah, that's exactly it. Yeah, so we have one driveway in there. So to kind of orient you a little bit elevation-wise, this is about 10 feet higher than the existing parking and loading. So we have this one driveway trying to help us climb up to that top area there. And so the parking spaces, really the intent of the parking is to provide additional parking capacity for the better service to employees of the business. There's actually more than the required zoning parking on the site already.
What's required, Anthony?
So...
Yeah.
Required is 213 spaces is required. Currently on-site is 245. We're adding 110. So we'll have a total of 455 on site. Yep, so we're gonna grab that, grab the GIS there. So most of the parking is kind of in the front of the building, office area, there is parking in along here. So 235 here. So 235, it's all around.
So this is 235?
Yep, that's loading there. Yep. So all throughout the site, what's happening is the majority of employees are in this section of the building. So it's really not that convenient to park. If you've ever been up there, you'll see a lot of empty parking spaces as you drive up Tucker Drive, a lot of empty spaces. A lot of people are parking over here because that's where they're trying to get into the building to go to the part of the facility they work at. Very, very large building. And so this parking lot is really intended to serve, better service to employees that are at the building now. And so again, a driveway comes up, going upgrade, parking in and around, lighting throughout the parking lot, some trees planted, landscape islands in and around.
You mentioned your lighting, that lighting directed to the center of the lot.
Yep, so what we've added to the plan is notes taken right from the regulations of the zoning, specific to lighting, as we've done in the past. We don't have the exact heads picked out, but yeah, they would have to be compliant with zoning, where basically they'll be angled down. The requirements are at the very least a 76-degree angle cutoff, shining down, which is pretty standard now with all parking lot lights. Yeah, that they call kind of dark sky compliant type of lighting. So the heads that we'll end up choosing would have to meet, I mean, we put these notes right on the plan, and that came from some of the comments in the planning department as well. So we put them right on there, so hopefully it doesn't get messed. It's right up there on there.
So we're only doing three?
Lights, we have one, two, three, four, another one down there, a couple, double heads.
Show it on the map for hand, yeah?
Yep, so we have one here, a double head here, double head here, another one here at the corner to try and cover that. And we have a walkway down to access the building. Snow storage, we've shown basically all around the perimeter of the project. Should be more than enough area for snow stores. Plus, if they, if they ever did run out of space, we could use some parking areas too because we have, well, more than a parking.
How come you went so above for the parking? Just curious. How come you go on a 445 and, you know, I'm always curious when I see a level like 455 compared to a required 213?
Sure. So they have, in the manufacturing area, 350 employees, which is an ease.
Yep.
So it's to really give the space for them to park safely. Because if you've ever been up there, there's people parking on Francis Street currently. People kind of parking, jamming spaces together where there isn't any spaces delineated. So it's to really help alleviate parking on Francis, Tucker, and kind of on parking in the site.
How many employees do they have total? If you know.
Total?
It's 113.
So we have...
Is there one?
Yes, it's AIS.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's an office furniture company.
So those 350, I know they're at the same time, aren't they? No, it's a shift.
That's the shift. So there's actually more employees than that. The 350 in manufacturing, the 30 in the warehouse, and an office, I don't have it handy.
It's in the, it's in the plans. I can...
The office I did, the parking, based on square footage, that's what they're requiring.
Right.
So it's 350 for manufacturing, 30 at the warehouse, and that's the highest shift. There is another second shift that doesn't have as many. I didn't list on the plan because I...
So you have a transition situation also?
True, yeah, absolutely.
The last sheet of the plans has the parking calculations with the place.
This is what I just, 455 spaces. I guess, snow storage in and around that area there. Just talking, plan showing the grading. Again, we're higher. It's about 12, 14 feet higher than the lower parking area. Slope down, stormwater, collecting catch basins, to manholes, to water quality unit, and then to this underground infiltration system. Get some ore recharge back into the ground to meet the stormwater standards.
Do we have a set of stairs?
What's that?
Is there a set of stairs?
Yep, right here.
That stairs?
Yep. This is a concrete walking stairs, five-foot line. That's a, that's over there. One thing to note in regards to landscaping, you can see it in some of the department's comments, is this amount of parking requires, it's 37 parking spaces, 37 trees. And so we've shown 16, so we're about 21 short on new trees. But the zoning allows for the use of retaining existing trees around the site. And you can see in the GIS, this is all, this is all wood, it's in the law. And so walk the proper line, try and assess how many trees we may or may not have left. I've come up with around 22 to 30, 25, 30, depending upon the size of trees. I just looked at kind of the six-inch or greater. The zoning says that you can use required trees of two-inch minimum diameter, four feet above the ground, so I think a little more than that. But you can see on the GIS, we're kind of, we're gonna have a lot of trees left over. So I didn't show additional trees in front of the trees that will be left. Some pictures of those areas if you're interested in seeing, so.
I was gonna ask you why you didn't take it down, though. I know why. I got to the griddle.
So that first, that first picture there is taken from these parking spaces looking into the parking area. Do you see a wall of ledge there? And then the trees that are on top. So the first three pages are really all about. And then, so you can see along to the...
The front line.
The red tapes you're putting, fracturing on it?
Yeah, so the stakes that are there are probably on a tree. Yes, so we're dropping this grade down in the back corner.
Or this side here goes up?
Yep, exactly. Back corner, about 10 to 12 feet. And we did do some test pits out there, because obviously you see that first picture, we were concerned with ledge. We did some test pits out there. We went down about 12 feet, 13 feet, we didn't hit anything. I think that first picture, you can kind of see the top of the ledge. It seems to be, that is literally the top, it didn't seem to rise, so...
Oh, okay.
And we did show the test pits on the plan. We did a few up in this corner, the ledge area. We went down as far as we could with the excavator, we didn't add, so we're confident we're all set there on that.
And that'll leave you still 10 feet high?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll still be, you know, up along this, this edge here, about 12 feet higher, and then we continue to climb up. The parking lot goes up eight feet from low point corner here, up into this corner here. Because that's how the land is sloping right now, goes up like this. It appears as though this area actually was disturbed probably when we originally built this building. There's, can I see the contour? It looks like there was probably a borrow pit in here, and they excavated out some earth. There's some boulders that were probably left that they didn't want to use.
It was, I can tell you it was. Because I helped cut the trees up in there, three years, 40 years ago.
Well, to us, I think it was the mid-'80s when that was built, so trees have come back. It seems like the growth on the outer perimeter seems to be original growth, it's like a transition. See the tight contours in here? That seems to be about the edge of the previous cut. So this, it seemed to be still original tree growth.
Do you have anything else to add?
Let's move on. I want to get into the comments from the department, so you guys can go through that.
Well, let's open it up to the, to the audience and see what you have for...
Do you think we should go through the comments in case someone has a question?
I don't know, let's go ahead.
Just in case they have comments that...
Well, okay. Okay. Make sure I got the regulations. The building inspector, he approved it. Police Department, no traffic or safety issues. The planning director.
I did another review dated May 13th after the applicant provided provisions.
Okay, can you get that to them?
It's at the very front of your packet. It's directed to the planning board.
Okay. Colonel, will you read that? We got nothing for you.
Sure. "Review of proposed parking has been completed by the director with suggestions of the following to the planning board. Pursuant to one of the zoning sections, landscaping must comply." The applicant has noted on the plans that there are existing wooded areas to be retained. Several new trees are proposed to be planted in the landscaping islands and on the perimeter of the site. The landscaping plan has been revised to depict the proposed tree species. And the second, the relevant section of the zoning details landscaping required in parking areas for greater than 25 parking spaces. Landscape islands shall be a minimum of eight by 10. Detail the dimensions of the proposed landscape islands on the plans. A minimum of one tree is required for every three parking spaces to be built. As this site is proposed to be comprised of 345 spaces, a total of 115 trees required, as Anthony discussed. Indicate whether the total of trees existing and proposed is greater than or equal to this number. Terms of lighting, notations have been added to the plan indicating compliance with zoning. Detail how all section, how, section of all the zoning sections will be met. And per zoning stormwater runoff detail has been provided will be reviewed by Public Works.
Okay. And then PPW there approved it, the P Department approved it, Bud Department approved it. Oh, let's see. Water Health, we have no issue with proposed parking area. Yet proposed lighting doesn't impact residents of 69 Francis Street. Conservation approves. There are no areas adjudicial to the Conservation Commission on this project currently. I do recommend using low-one impact development to sustain city's future.
Why, Inspector, has no comment?
Yeah, why, Inspector, has no comment? I was looking for his comment.
That's right.
He had the wrong paper. That's just Joe. Okay? That's the different departments. Okay, anything else, Anthony? Boy? I'll open it up to residents. If they have any questions. That's good, we answered all the questions.
Yes.
I'll answer one more time. Do we have any other questions? Third and final time. Ask any questions? Okay, back to the board. Anything else you want? I have a motion to close the hearing. Any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Hearing is closed. Just to let you folks know, later on in our agenda, we will discuss this and if there are any conditions. Right now, if we want to add, it'll be done at that time.
You can take anything back if you want to develop a say or change.
I need a, one packet for the record.
Yeah, take John's because you might want to expect. We have something for the town sudden, you know, when they say...
Here's a whole... Take that.
I hope he made more than one coffee. I hope he made more than one coffee.
Yeah, here's, here's the, here's the work map. Don't take away from that.
GIS, sorry.
It's there. If any of you folks want to look at the GIS map, you want to pass that, pass that up to the audience. That wooded spot is in that corner in there.
All right. If we can help out the next two together, so we can say...
Okay. Give everybody a context setup here. Open public meeting for 200 Tanzio Road, a site plan approval, and opening up an open public hearing. Yeah. For Tanzio Road, a special permit approval for use. Elizabeth, does it want something in the paper?
Yes, do you want me to read what was in the paper, or do you...
Yeah, read that, what did you notice, Chris?
"In accordance with Chapter 48, Section 9 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Lemmister Planning Board will hold a public information meeting on Monday, May 20th, 2019, at 6:45 PM to review a site plan application, a public hearing at 6:46 PM to review a special permit application for use. In the TA conference room located on the second floor of Lemmister City Hall, 25 West Street, Lemmister, Massachusetts, to consider the following matter. A special permit application for use and a site plan application have been submitted for 200 Tanzio Road, map 320, Lot 2, size plus or minus 9.621 acres, otherwise 419,090 square feet. And Lot A1, size plus or minus 3.841 acres, otherwise 167,313.96 square feet, located in the industrial district in Lemmister, Massachusetts. The applicant, Scott Lemay of United Material Management of Lemmister LLC, on behalf of property under Carter Hall Holding Company Corporation, Rolonio Trust, is petitioned to construct a 32,000, 500-square-foot building to be used as a solid waste recycling and transport station with related parking utilities and stormwater controls. Eight paid parking spaces are proposed to service the site. Construction of a rail spur to service site is also proposed."
Okay. Thank you. Pushed over.
Can we open up both teams?
Yes.
Yes, both are open.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Lemay. I'm the CEO of United Material Management. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. First picture that I would draw you to is, because I think the concerns there is how long this is fitting to an industrial zone. And the first thing I'd like to say is that, you know, modern facilities are aesthetically pleasing. They're well landscaped and they fit into an industrial environment. This facility is not ours, but it's in Fort Devens, which is next to a lot of multinational companies and, you know, very sizable multinational, multimillion-dollar companies. This other facility that we have a stake in is in Miles Standish Industrial Park, which is one of the largest industrial parks in the Commonwealth. And we literally go, you know, miles through the park of these like huge multinationals, you know, Verizon Hotels. And this one also happens to be on the edge of the park where there is residents that would be like similar proximities, and we've operated there without one complaint. We also operate a facility in Worcester, Mass, and we have, we're in an industrial zone, and there's also residents that do not have the same particular changes that our facility, that I will show you in a minute. But we operate there with a 24/7 permit and still have never received a complaint as well. So I'd just like to point out that, you know, what are the reasons for that? All the material handling is in a controlled environment within an enclosed building. And what do I mean is, is that the regulatory environment for what you've seen, I think, in the past versus now is just quite different. So we have atomized misting systems. They don't use a lot of water, but they use high pressure. So they encapsulate any dust particles and they use that. They control the, you know, any potential for particular, particular matter in the building. In some cases, we have facilities that we actually have to wet materials so that when they end up at locations, that we can monitor like the levels of mist and moisture that we can put into certain materials. This facility in Lemmister is much simpler. It's, you know, a very basic facility that's really geared towards using the rail. We, the misting system as well can, we don't typically get odor at our facilities because we're in a controlled environment. We have the ability to close doors very fast and stay in a controlled environment. But in the event that we did, we also can put counteractants and agents in that misting system in order to counteract that. So that's what I mean by a controlled environment in the building. We have, obviously the Board of Health and Mass DEP has inspection rights. And in fact, the DEP comes quite often. The reason they come is usually for wastebank compliance. They want to check for that recyclable material is not going for disposal. So sometimes they spend hours on our floor and at our facility, and it just gives you some idea of what the regulatory environment is for the facility. We have third-party inspections with third-party engineers that come and come to the facility and they, they submit quarterly reports with very extensive reporting to DEP. We have load inspection personnel as loads come in and do comprehensive inspections. They also have licensed asbestos inspectors. We don't find it, but, you know, in the events we quarantine material before sending it for testing, and it's like a very rare event, or maybe happens every couple of years or so. There's an operations manual and procedure and checklist that are approved by DEP and that have to be monitored, and they get monitored as part of the quarterly inspections that happen with the third-party inspectors and anytime the DEP comes to our facility. I guess really what I'm saying is the old dump yard concept that this is messy business, it's just, it's, it's, it's not, that perception with odor and nuisances, it's not based on current regulations and current technology. And unfortunately, you know, you do have some facilities, and I'm not knocking anyone else's facility, but, you know, the one that would come to mind that Lemmister uses quite a bit is the one on Airport Road. Well, they had grandfathering and they put that in before the current regulations, and it's a very unique situation where they also happened to be on an unlined... And it's a very unique situation where they also happen to be on an online landfill in the back where they lease land and as a result, they can store stuff outside. That can never happen at our facility. Everything is in the controlled environment. I mean, we're at a point now where the industry is just elevated and the regulations have elevated. Like I'm showing you a few machines here and I'm not just showing you that there's, so that you understand that we do know how to operate in a controlled environment. We don't do, we won't deploy those machines in the facility that we're about to show you in Lemanster, but we clearly have like controlled picking rooms that are, you know, with really good air conditioning and.
Better than here, right?
You know, and heat and windows and we try to provide a good atmosphere for the worker. But, you know, why do I say that is that we, you know, we know how to operate a building in that, in a controlled environment. In fact, what we do here is we have elevated our game. We recycle 28 million pounds of wood that goes into particle board, manufacturing these kinds of tables. Just in the last 12 months, 14 million pounds of metal, various grades of metals that gets used for recycling. Another 29 million pounds of aggregates that we got, we're able to keep out of landfills. And then another 50 million pounds of other beneficial use materials that could convert it back to some form of raw material versus just disposal. At the end of the day, when we can't recycle things, the project that we're proposing, we would, a big part of what we do is construction material. That's our mousetrap. And we would take that material to our own processing plant so that we could recover material. But right now, what's happening is is that when you have a site that's on rail, it's just an unbelievable situation. And the reason is is that we are in a disposal crisis in Massachusetts. There are 6 million tons being generated and 3 million of it will be leaving over 300 miles. So when you use rail, you cut carbon emissions by four to five times versus sending stuff by truck. And it's really important to have that infrastructure.
Where will that stuff be going on by rail?
So there's like really large sites that are in Ohio and in upstate New York and Michigan and Virginia. And where now experience, I think, what like Boston and this whole proper area is experiencing more like what would happen towards the city in New York where there is just no disposal. And everything is about the infrastructure to reduce material and how do you, and how can you effectively move it longer distances?
So if it's all moving by rail to the, I mean, you have a controlled environment here, what about the environment with the rail cars loaded while it's waiting for a train to pick it up?
So the rail car actually gets loaded inside the building?
And does it stand the building until it's picked up?
No, but if it's construction material, it moves almost like an aggregate. There's no potential for a nuisance condition with construction. It's doesn't, you know, it doesn't have odor. It's dry. If it's MSW, not, it has to be in an enclosed container. And I think I have a picture of one. They're sealed, like literally sealed. That's how the stuff moves from New York City and it's a much worse situation. They go to a barge. They barge it to a rail. They put it on rail. By the time it ends up getting to a landfill, the time, distance is, is very great. What we have here is a luxury of is it's quick movements. Goes Framingham, straight to Selkirk and then the next disposal site. So the only way that we can move MSW is either in, it has to be in an enclosed container that's watertight. It literally has to, the spec is it has to be able to hold 24 inches of water.
So they can't sit there and fester while you're waiting for 20 cars to be picked up?
No, the material has to move every couple of days. Oh, I'm sorry. Municipal, I have my acronyms. Municipal Solid Waste. So that's like, no, MSW, the regular stuff is in the community. Got it. So I just want to point out, you know, obviously nuisance conditions and those things are, you know, our concerns. And I want to point out that Lemanster Board of Health, these were their findings. The traffic and access to the site was a major topic. They said, the board finds, this was in the site assignment, the decision that you have. The board finds that the site will not pose a threat to public health, safety or the environment, taking into consideration traffic congestion, pedestrian vehicle safety, road configuration, alternate routes and vehicle emissions. The traffic study used very conservative assumptions, including the assumption that all waste would be removed by truck rather than rail. The McMahon, the traffic consultant and planner concluded that the project facility traffic will not have an appreciable traffic impact. They also went on to say the potential for the creation of nuisance condition. The board finds that the site will not result in nuisance conditions, will not constitute a danger to public health, safety or the environment, taking into consideration noise, litter, vermin, odors and other nuisance problems. And I think they realize that we're in a different, you know, we have a different regulatory environment and that the mitigation measures that can be taken by the technology and our operations, maintenance plans that are approved and monitored by DEP are very effective at containing the material in a building and very effective at controlling that environment. What did they mean when they said that the traffic? That we use very conservative assumptions. I'll be very simple. I'll try to be as simple and fast as I can about this. They assumed at full capacity, 77 inbound vehicles. They assumed 35 vehicles to remove the material. The reality is most, half of the material or more will end up on rail. So those 35 vehicles that remove the material are likely to be cut in half. The other issue is is we're a logistics company. This is what we do. We manage material, the name of the company, United Material Management. And it's crazy for us to send, to like go pick up at a demo job, dispose of the material there and leave empty. We would load that vehicle and then take it to our processing plant for further processing and recycling. So we used, when they said conservative assumptions, it was the worst assumptions. And the other thing I would say is is that if you ask Green Seal Environmental, who's probably one of the top environmental companies in New England that we hired for this project, is that transfer stations can never operate at full capacity for any long-term period of time. So they typically are running in that 60% or 70% range. So 77 inbound trucks, I mean, people, it's a misconception that we are massive traffic generators and that we're a problem for traffic. The reality is is if you had a FedEx terminal, you're talking about 2,000 to 3,000 vehicles a day. Like we are low generators of traffic and that is the fact. Just going to orientate you to the site and I am going to, sorry Laura, ruin these drawings. Maybe red will be better. So our property boundaries go like this. That's the rail. So we intentionally, in negotiations with parties, you know, in the area, well, sometimes there were discussions, other times there was just, you know, me listening and then reacting. And I will say that we've had some good discussions with Frank. I've tried to keep him up to date. We've, you know, we've tried to review this and I have had, you know, a lot of other parties there, which I'll mention in a minute. But we intentionally positioned the building. It's really in this area, facing this direction. And this is kind of where the activity of the paved surface is. So this is Fratacelli Oil. This is the cube storage. And this is the power station. And we did, we did that intentionally. Our buffer zone is amazing here because we have, not only do we have topography changes here, you're going to hear from Laura in a minute that when we went to conservation, instead of using the full 60 something thousand square feet of buffer area that we could have used under normal construction standards, we chose to replicate 48,000 square feet with 190 trees and shrubs and other vegetation in this area. This is a major, major topography change. I've stood up there with city councilors and, you know, the mayor and other parties. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a good distance and it's a major topography change and it's a good natural buffer. This is all good natural buffer as well too, because it's the, it's the power lines. So then even when you look out of our facility, so the entrance is going to be in this area and. So when you look out this entrance, you know, this is directly what you're looking at. And there's a power line that goes, takes a very steep slope and. This set of rocks right here is right here. That's the power line. This is the other materials in this area. So what you have is, is, you know, as you know, this park was, there was $2.8 million or so invested to have an industrial park here for, I believe, this type of industry and infrastructure. And this is an industrial lot that's a buffer to any residential area. Basically, this entire area, this is the buffer until you get, you know, this area is right here and then you go to where AIS is with 100,000 square feet operating 24/7 with rail lines next to this condominium complex, which they are, for a company that is the highest industrial taxpayer in the city. And I think with our royalty arrangements, we're going to make something like the second highest payer. But I hope this gives you some. This is 117. This is Crest. This is Quality Masonry. Jam Plastics is over here. This is AIS. This is the outdoor asphalt plant. This is vacant land to be developed. This is obviously the vacant land to be developed. And I already mentioned these other industries. And then up this way, this is ETL Laboratories and a series of other industries. Have I done a decent job of getting you oriented to where this property is?
Thank you.
So I just want to let you know, like, you know, there's, I don't know if you, you know, the full zoning ordinance is here. There's an ordinance that states that. Has anybody looked at the legal ramifications of what we have here?
Because it's a solid waste facility, there's, it's like pseudo exempt from zoning, right? From my, from my reading of Section 9. Because when I saw it was a special permit, I always read the special permit section. So did you, I'm sorry to interrupt. May I ask Mr. Lemay a question? So did you get a, I mean, this is wholly zoned industrial?
Yes.
The whole area?
And every, and every butter.
And then did you, do you have that, because under the zoning, you need that, the site assignment that I think you referred to.
So we have a site assignment and I wanted to, I'm trying to cover a lot of information quickly here. But so these were some of the findings of the site assignment that was issued. But I kind of left out some parts here in that it wasn't just that your board came up with the fact that this didn't pose a public threat to health, safety and the environment. This process started a year ago with the executive. It started when Green Seal Environmental did the analysis of the study to see if it could comply to all of the issues. And they opined and put their certifications on the line as to, you know, what this facility would entail. And then we hired McMahon Associates, who's another premier traffic consultant that went and looked at the traffic for the area. And then we went to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs and they, they gave us a positive determination and issued us a MEEPA certificate. Then we went to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, who worked in conjunction with your Board of Health to issue this site assignment. The first step that they do is they issue a site suitability report. They analyze traffic nuisance conditions and a whole series of other environmental factors and determine that the site did not, did not pose a threat to public health, safety and the environment and met the standards. Once that happened, then there was a site assignment hearing with the local Board of Health. The local Board of Health then in turn said, we'd like you to get an air and noise study, which isn't common because there's sometimes a presumption that you can operate within the zones if you're within the certain buffers. But we got an air and noise study. Then they, the city also hired, who I think you use regularly as your engineers, Woodwood and Curran, who also has an expertise in this business as well as other community type engineering. And they in turn hired Vada Group to analyze our traffic study. And then they turned around and hired accidentally, I believe, because I'm convinced that Chris Canute already was comfortable with air and noise compliance, community noise study. But they hired, they went down that path and they hired another noise consultant. The bottom line is is that every one of these agencies and all of these experts throughout the whole year of the process all ended up with the same conclusion that we did not pose a threat to public health, safety and the environment, taking into consideration traffic access and any of the nuisance conditions and then all of the other five environments with criteria as well. So that is a long-winded answer, Vice Chairman, to say that we do in fact have a valid site assignment.
Yes would have been okay.
I just wanted to give you some, you know, idea that this isn't like we went into some, you know, one meeting. This is, this has been a very scrutinized analysis, you know, that's been done over a year period. So did you want to make any comments about the?
Well, I'm just, well, because, you know how like some, you know how like schools, this is what I was thinking, because when I saw this solid waste facility and then we needed a special permit and I found section, it's like at the end of the, of Section 9. So it's sort of like, it's not like, you know how like churches and schools are exempt? And actually, they're exempt from, and they can go anywhere in a municipality. So, but as long as it's in an industrial zone and they have that site assignment. This is the section of statute. It says, "The city shall." "The city shall not adopt an ordinance prohibiting the sighting of such a facility or the expansion of one," this is relating to solid waste facilities, "on any locus zone for industrial use or require a license or permit to be granted by the city, except a special permit, which can impose reasonable conditions on the construction or operation of the facility, unless the prohibition was in effect before July 1, 1987." And I don't, we didn't have zoning before then anyway, before it went into effect in 1987.
Well, I think not only that, Carol, that is that you have a, you actually have a solid waste transfer station category for this property, which would show that there wasn't, I think that at the end, the end game is is that it's, it definitely states that, you know, the special permit would be granted. But I want to make sure that everybody here knows, we didn't, we've never operated on that premise. We have listened to input from every single board. And I'm going to explain some of the things that we did, you know, to demonstrate that, which is, you know, I mentioned this earlier, you know, before the meeting started. I got, I have long family roots here. I have my son here. You know, my first major contract was in the city of Lemanster, 21 years old. My son works in the building that's right next door to this place. He lives here. My daughter lives across the street. We, you know, I've lived here. We've had long-term roots here. So we, we're literally have thrown every resource that we can and beyond the requirements. Examples of that are, you know, we could have saved money by connecting to the rail on a spur that was here, but it was closer to an area, closer to where the, an area of critical environmental concern would be. So instead, we spent a quarter of a million dollars to connect to the main line so that we only have rail track until we're out of any buffer area that's on the existing constructed rail path.
Will the rail go into the building?
It does.
It does, okay.
And we do have a better picture of that, just where the building is, okay.
Yeah, we'll just turn it a little bit so they can get it with a TV.
So we also spent with CSX another $100,000 or so, so instead of us connecting more track here in areas that could be of concern to, to upgrade their turnaround that they currently use. We, as I mentioned, we had the ability when we went for our determination at the Conservation Commission to be able to, under normal construction standards, use over 65,000 square feet of. Disturbed space and we chose to use 4,800 where the stubs for the utilities were already planned for this development. And then we chose to spend another, to replicate about 45,000 or so square feet, Laura's going to talk about that in a little bit more detail. With 90 shrubs and trees as opposed to using that land. We repositioned the building trying to consider any potential problems with a resident. And then we also implemented a royalty agreement and we allowed for the, an agreement for the city to make sure that they could utilize this facility for 20 years, that their sole option. So I think we've thrown, you know, a lot of resources at this, we've done reach out, I've been out on the property with, you know, many, with, with counselors and other officials. There's people that live in the neighborhood that, you know, work at town hall, the people that I've really walked the site with and been able to show them the plans, I think ended up. You know, really, you know, changing their opinion about the, the facility and, you know, one particular person was this gentleman, Mr. Daye. He had a lot of concerns and fears and he was on the web with it and, you know, I think you have an email and a letter from him.
It's been distributed.
Yep, we have.
So you can see where he said, look, I'm very concerned, but after I went up there and saw what's there, that, you know, this thing is a perfect spot for it. And he happens to work at these types of facilities, so he knows the difference between current regulations and, 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 and some of the older facilities that I think give people some of the scares that. They can get accounted with this type of facility. So I think what I've tried to cover here and Laura's going to cover some of the detailed pieces of, of the, the site plan review. But we really are like any other business, we have a beautifully landscaped facility. We have relatively low traffic in comparison to other businesses that could go there. And we're not, you know, we're, we're like any businesses that has inbound and outbound materials. The difference with us is that it's actual infrastructure that every resident constituent business and contractor can utilize. Which it's, this place really is a gem for the city in terms of the infrastructure from the standpoint of. To get that many linear feet of rail and be able to get the radius of turns and the topography changes that need to take place in order to get rail in a building to do this. They're not easy properties to find in an industrial zone surrounded by all other industry with the type of highway access that this has. It really is, it's the envy of some other communities that are going to be sending trucks 350 miles away. Whereas being able to have infrastructure to deal with what's a considerable budget item for all businesses and constituents, so. I think I've covered the part of how I, well, I think we fit in and, and some of the. You know, the extra steps that we've taken and Laura can pick up from there with.
Quick question on the road, I know that's lightly used today. Is, is that CSX or is it?
It is CSX.
Okay. And are they upgrading the tracks any or?
So they are actually upgrading the tracks all the way from Leominster to Framingham.
Oh, okay.
And I had left Frank one time and we happened to run into the CSX guy and I called him and I, because he said, you know, they're in tough shape and they're upgrading the railroad ties. From Leominster all the way to Framingham. The other thing I would just mention is you think that, does this mean more rail cars? CSX is a logistics company, they get here, they just add cars to the existing train.
For the record, Laura gave Green Seal Environmental the engineer project. Kind of stole some of my, my presentation, but that's fine, I'll work with that. He kind of went through the, the aerial here, again, just to orient you, Tansia Road here to the east. Property lines shown in black, that's what he was highlighting previously. Industrial properties here, the rail to the west, other industrial properties across from there. Industrial properties to the south and then the, there's a brook here in this, in this, oh, sorry, up here, in this wooded area on the south side of the site. In terms of zoning, this is your zoning map. The industrial properties are shown.
What's your clip that, can you turn up and flip that up high? And we can also that.
I'm going to flip it to this one soon.
Oh, you're going to flip it to that one?
Yeah, I'll just hold it. So the industrial properties are shown in this light green here. Our site is here, again, it shows that we're pretty surrounded in the middle of this industrial zone. So the proposed project. Proposed project involves construction of a new handholding building. All the materials and transfer will occur inside of this building, as Scott had mentioned. Building's going to be about 45, 44 feet tall, which is below the 90-foot maximum height requirement for the industrial zone. As Scott mentioned, we've situated the building not only outside of the resource area buffer zones here. Meeting all required setbacks, but also we faced it so the doors are facing north, away from the street. And away from the residential areas to the east and to the southwest. That will help with mitigating any potential noise impacts as well as improve aesthetics from the roadway. Again, there's four truck bays proposed on the north side as well as the rail bay, the rail will come into the building, will be loaded inside the building. This provides adequate loading and unloading areas within the building. Scott mentioned the building's going to be equipped with environmental controls, the atomized misting system as well as trench drains at the doors to help mitigate and reduce potential nuisance conditions. Building will be surrounded by new pavement. This will allow adequate vehicular and emergency access to the building. Proposing two truck scales onsite with a scale house. We have provided parking next to the scales here. Sheet C5 shows those parking spaces with striping. We've provided the required one space for three employees plus a handicapped accessible space next to the building here. They are all connected by the crosswalk. We've also provided a snow storage along the edges of the pavement. This will not interfere with the parking areas or the loading areas as required. We've provided about 13,000 square feet of snow storage area, which is more over 10% than the total amount of pavement. All stormwater from the pavement areas will be collected and keep some catch bases with hoods, they'll be routed through oil and water separators. And then they'll be, its flows will be attenuated and infiltrated in subsurface infiltration systems. We did provide a stormwater report with our application and that report shows that we need the state's stormwater standards fully from the development. We also collect and will infiltrate the roof runoff as well, so all the previous surface of the site will be infiltrated and managed. During the site assignment process, there was discussion of traffic on Tansia Road and truck access. Trucks will be required to access the site directly from 117. They won't be allowed to go up through Melbourne Street and Aspen Wall convert here to the north. So we have situated and configured this entrance to direct this exiting flow, traffic flow to the right. We've also provided signage and pavement markings restricting them to that right-hand and right-way. The site entrance will be landscaped, including planting beds, decorative fencing and the decorative entrance gate that is rendering here is what. Scott was referencing before, this fence is, is, will be exactly the fence we are using here. The planting beds on either side and I'll show this on the landscaping plan as well. So this is the landscaping plan, sheet L2 in your packages, that shows the planting beds in the dark green here. We'll have ground cover in front of the fence line along the roadway. I believe your regulations require 15 foot, 15 foot wide landscaping strip, this is 17 feet. Also. Scott had talked about the restoration project that we're doing to restore and stabilize the disturbed area within these wetland buffer zones here. So all of this area is going to be landscaped with ground cover and with additional trees. So that will significantly help aesthetics and screening from the street into the facility. We have provided a mix of trees, shrubs, ground cover and corunnials as part of the overall site landscaping plan. And, and again, it's landscaping really at the entrance, restoration in the buffer zones and then site stabilization in some areas along the pavement. But with that, we have proposed more tree species than the four allowed for zoning. I believe you count a, no more than 50% can be any one species and no less than 25% can be with any one tree species. Which really, from what I read is you can have no more than four and no less than two different tree species. We've proposed six because we have all this restoration.
So what tree species are you, there she come right there?
We have three trees, red maple. Birch, river birch and. Pin oaks. And then we have balsam firs, eastern white pines and eastern pine walks. So we have a mix of deciduous and coniferous trees. Because we are, we are landscaping all in this whole area, we have different, different landscaping plans based upon our restoration area. So all this area is going to be restored and or stabilized. So I talked about screening from the street. Scott also mentioned screening from the south and the west. There's a large hill here about 25 feet above it is a great here, that's all vegetated, large tree, that can provide screening to the southwest. The CSX rail is about 15 feet above the grade of the facility. Again, that will provide some screening in the buffer to the west. There is another hill on the other side of the CSX rail tracks here, which will provide additional screening beyond. The electrical easement that runs along the north side of the property, there's existing vegetation through here, which will provide screening to the north. We have proposed outside lighting, we've provided a photometrics plan, there is a revised one in the response to comments package. The limit of lighting to zero foot candles is outlined in the purple. The entire developed area is lit. We, we don't go over the property line except in two different areas. We have light at the max of 0.2 candle feet, which I believe is less than moonlight, onto the CSX rail property here. And then we have some lighting at the site entrance that goes over the property line, over the street. The lights that we proposed, they have a zero uplight rating to meet dark sky requirements and nothing above the 90-degree angle is, is lit from them. However, they don't meet your 76-degree cutoff angle requirement. I, I, I know that that cutoff angle really speaks to glare for street lighting, for pedestrian and, and car safety. As well as light trespass property lines. But in, because the lights are proposed internal to the facility, they have the zero uplight. In consideration of the, the large setbacks that we have to property lines. It could be considered that the cutoff point was less important at this application. And we do, we are requesting a waiver for such compliance.
Is there a reason you don't go up to the 74 degree?
They're more at like 82, it's just this, this light style that we chose that's at other facilities. It's, it's at the Millbury facility as well. It does, it, it gives a bigger range of lighting, so we need to have less actual lights and poles on the facility. As Scott mentioned, we've conducted the traffic analysis, which was included in your, in your packages, the noise assessment was also included in the application. And again, to reiterate, significant permitting efforts have already occurred in the project, multiple reviews by agencies and the city and the city's consultants. So in, in summary, you know, we've, I, I feel that we've provided all the information necessary to, to show that we've met both site plan review criteria as well as the special permit criteria. We have received comments from city departments and the planning director and have responded to those. And we're just requesting the two waivers, one for the trees, quantities and the, the cutoff levels.
Okay, thank you. Quick question, are there any? Local resident drop off for this, strictly commercial use?
It is strictly commercial use, yes.
We really felt like mixing residents in with like a more commercial type operation wouldn't be appropriate. I think we're working with the city right now to see, you know, where can there be a nice paved area? Because what happens is there's a lot of volume of people, but it's actually a very low volume of material. Like a couple of nice compactor somewhere would be enough to service the city and, and, and do it in a way where we would not be, we wouldn't conflict with the, the, the commercial vehicles.
Well, I'm curious because I've seen the, over off Airport Road, what they have and what people do over there, so there is an impact on your, your facility.
Well, if, if, you know, like I said, we're trying to find an area where people can just go to a, a, a nicely paved surface and you drop and it would end up in a compactor and we may have to haul that compactor like once a week. It's not a high volume, it's not a high tonnage operation, although it can be a, a lot of people going to it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, right now, your commercial trucks are contracted, right, to, they go to the location on Airport Road? You are, I didn't want to deviate too much, but you know, your asking is I want to make sure you know. We agreed for 20 years to allow the city for a very low fee in order to, so that you can go to bid anywhere. So what this place does is give you access to landfills and incinerators. So what this place does is give you access to landfills and incinerators and other disposal operations as far as 700 miles away. You're in a situation right now where the only remaining landfill is Fitchburg, and it doesn't look like it's going to make it based on what we've seen so far with trying to swap limits to state forest land in order to expand the landfill. The only landfills left are in Taunton and in Chicopee, and they both will be closed within 12 months. So there really is, when I said it's a gem in terms of having infrastructure, it is really hard to find a property like, the way this thing is shaped so that we have that many linear feet to bring track in, handle the radius, get it in a building, have adequate storage on a main line, it's, it's rarefined.
It's interesting because I, I'm originally from Taunton and was involved with planning back there when they did Mile Standish.
Oh, really?
So I'm going full circle here.
So we're at the very back end, and you know, there's residents that are, you know, like right around 500 feet from there. And like I said, we have never, we have not had one complaint. And it's a similar operation that has rail and, and has municipal solid waste as well as construction material. Like I mentioned, we are, our specialty though is construction because we own a series, I showed you some of the equipment. It's a series of air separators, shakers, grinders, eddy currents, magnets that to extract that, you know, million, you know, 100 million tons, I mean, pounds of material that we recycled in the last 12 months. So that is our specialty. Having the rail though, to get that residual material in your community, it's, it's not something that, it's not an easy find. It's really, I think it will pay big dividends over time.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions, board members?
I just, go ahead.
No.
I just got a question. When you bring the car in, is, is the train pushing it in? Is the locomotive pushing it or pulling it?
So.
How's that work?
So it's like, have you ever seen a trackmobile? Let me, let me show it to you. You know, people think there's locomotives with all this action there. It's really not the case. It's a very small machine, and it is.
It's small, it's quiet, it goes slow, it's basically the speed of walking to move the cars around on site.
Okay. It's a relatively small motor. It moves the, it moves the speed of us walking while it's pulling.
It's the size of an SUV, size of a Greyhound bus.
It's the size of an SUV. A big SUV, like a big new car or something.
It's a non-fancy Escalade.
But it has a relatively small motor and it's not, you know, we've never had it in our experience.
So did I see like, what is it, three sets of tracks that you have storage?
Yes.
Yes.
To hold your cars, the full or empty?
Yep. The three tracks here is siding where, where car storage will be.
So we don't need a locomotive to come to move something. We move a car.
But it's a pill back to the tracks, right?
It's a small grade. I will tell you that CSX has unbelievably strict rules. It's very, you know, there's a lot of bureaucracy there. And for us to pull all this together has been.
Could be less than 2%, right?
Yes, yep.
And the radiuses are tight, so.
You better get back out of the track.
No, they come, they actually come in in one shot and just pull.
Back in, hook up, and then.
Add it to whatever they're pulling.
So I just, I, and I'm sure Laura, you went through some of these things, but I just wanted to ask, I'm just going through the department head comments.
Yep.
So for planning, our director, for parking, you're not going to have, you're proposing eight parking spaces?
Yes. Yeah, in the first round of plans, I, a lot of people kind of missed that they were tucked in next to the scale. So I clarified that in my response. So we're providing that one space per three employees, with an estimated of 24 employees.
So it's one per three?
That's what it says, yep. During the maximum daily shift. So that's why, so you have, you have, you're going to have the.
So if everybody drives, we don't have enough spots. Do you have a contingency plan? Do you have all your employees show up with their own car?
So this facility, although we generate a lot of employment because it's a lot of, you know, there's truck drivers and type of stuff, but they don't necessarily start there. The people that are on site, it's unlikely that there'd be much more than six at a time.
Yeah, I think 24 is, is over two shifts.
24 over two shifts.
So you have 24 spaces now? You have eight? No, you have eight. You have 24 employees, eight spaces because it's one per three.
Yes. And there's, there's other room around the building that isn't necessarily in any truck paths. I'm sorry if I'm standing behind you, making you nervous. There's space on here, you know, the, the truck paths will come in, they'll go over the scale, they'll come up here, they'll back in, they'll loop back around and go on the outbound scale. So there's plenty of room on the side of the building here for additional parking.
So there's no plans to, to have additional employee base? You know, as you grow, if you grow, which you want to do, right?
Yes, I, I hope you grow.
I mean, should we accommodate some of that parking now in case there is some growth or at least delineate some parking, whether it's paved or not?
So the only way that we are going to be able to like add a lot of employees there would be some change to the way this thing operates in terms of like the technology or like some more sorting or that kind of thing, which we haven't proposed right now. At this point, we have enough parking to handle running at full capacity. So there's no way we're going to add more people without some kind of major change that would require back to, it's, back to DP, back to, what the hell, back to.
Who are the, who are the truck drivers? Where, they, they take the trucks home?
They go, you know, we.
Or you have a yard for the trucks?
They start at different places, so.
Yeah, I just want everybody to hear.
Yeah, they start at different places, so.
Oh, these aren't your truck drivers, right there?
Yeah, we have a whole fleet that does that, yeah. But no, this is not a home, this is not a home for the fleet of a hauling company. This is, it's to service this facility, that's it.
So we found on Willard Street with, you see, with bars is a part narrative of trucks.
Casey?
Trucking, the old case. Wasn't supposed to be like that.
So, okay, so then the next section that our director addresses is landscaping, which he went through. Okay, I think you've addressed most of these. Some of these are technical that I think. Oh, this is one. So for snow storage, I know you would trust that, Laura, but it says, our director's stating, indicate the square footage of the proposed snow storage areas in contrast to the square footage of the proposed paved area. Once the parking areas are designated, the plan will be evaluated to ensure that the proposed snow storage areas do not approach on the designated parking spaces. We actually only have eight places, but.
Yeah, and that's what I talked about is the spaces up here next to the scale, either of the two scales. The snow storage is shown here. We've got 84 hundred square feet here. Another area was about 1,800 square feet, and another one was about 2,700 square feet. And then we have our proposed pavement is about 117,000 square feet. So again, that's about 10, 13,000.
Yes, probably 8.5%.
It's about over, over 10%.
Is it over 10%?
Yeah, because 10% would be 11,000.
Okay. All right, and it was, I think we've addressed everything else in hers. Sean, if I could just keep the seat going. Police, again, I'm speaking relative to the site plan right now. Police approve, wire approves, building inspector says you need a parking plan, which now you have. Assessor says, and frankly, I don't understand what he means, maybe, will they, will you be recording a new subdivision plan for the additional area owned by Carter Hill Williams?
Yeah, we submitted an A and R plan back in January or February. That's been taken care of.
Okay, that was an A, so that's why, because he's using the term subdivision, I'm thinking that.
Carter Hill did that with, with starting development.
Okay, and that was an A and R, okay. Board of Health goes through the whole process. I'm not going to, they have a lengthy paragraph, but it's basically how they, how they, it went through different reviews. You had independent consultants review it. The project was reviewed and approved for site suitability is by MIPA and MADP. That's the bottom line. DPW says, please add note that existing piles to be removed and legally disposed of, with the language they wanted as well. Site plan with proposed parking, you've done that. All D-hole testing is to be witnessed by the DPW, and all test holes will be required at all infiltration facilities prior to construction with a member of the engineering department present. And the groundwater mounding analysis indicates the subsurface infiltration systems will be submerged during a 100-year storm event. How can the infiltration systems be utilized for storm attenuation during a 100-year storm event if the system is submerged?
Do you have any else for that?
I do. Yeah, we've responded to their comments. I also spoke to DPW about it. In regards to the piles and the testing, we did add notes to the plans indicating that that would need to be done. As for the mounding analysis, our analysis was extremely conservative, and we used different infiltration rates based upon the NRCS soil maps, which those soils are present in the upper layers, but where we're infiltrating into is sands. I mean, this whole area's been sand and gravitons. So when I, we ran the numbers to reflect the underlying sands, their concerns were alleviated within the results.
You were at separation.
And then it says the, at the time of this writing, back in early May, said this project is before the conservation commission. Have you, you took it before them?
Yes, we received a negative determination of applicability from them approving all the work that's in any of their jurisdictions.
Chairman, you're seeing the piles that are there. That was part of what we did with the restoration, restoration there. We realized that the easier piece was for, the easier permitting path was for us to just not go to conservation and develop this project, and instead we chose to replicate the, we saw over an, over an acre of, over an acre of vegetation, and I, and as Laura had mentioned, with 90 trees and shrubs in that corner.
Yeah, I can see that, yeah. Unless you that amount replication on restoration, it looks good.
They were very complimentary. They were like, this is not a norm, this isn't.
That's not normal.
It's not normal.
Fire approves. For the special permit process, planning has the same comments, which we've discussed. Police is the same. They approve, wire approves. Building approves, but I think there's comments. Board of Health, same thing, it was approved. Assessing approves. There they approved it. DPW approves. Oh, yeah, Concom and Fire, yeah.
Yeah. That's all of them.
Okay, yeah, good.
I think we've gone through most of it. Do you have anything else you wish to add?
I think I'll try to.
I'll put it up to the audience, do I have any questions? Yes, sir. Please address the board and then.
Frank Binguazi, senior, this is my son Junior.
Okay, Frank.
He lives at 27 Calza Street.
Right, on the other side.
Right on the side, 360 feet from the proposed site. Your hours, what's your hours going to be?
So I think as you know, we originally, we originally wanted the same hours as any other industry there, like AIS and Beamen would be 24/7 because we're surrounded by industry. I had a conversation with Frank, and we changed the hours from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That's acceptance. Obviously, we need to be able to maintain and clean the facility, and that's Monday through Friday, and then till 3:00 on Saturday.
6:00 AM to 3:00?
7:00. 7:00 AM to 3:00 on Saturdays, just for.
Does that include rail? Or do they, they come when they want them?
They come when they want them.
Yeah.
They already come though. It's, you know, it's nothing, it's a federally, you know, they're federally regulated. There's no way, there's not.
Basically, those hours are just incoming trucks.
Yes.
Okay. Seth, do you get those times then?
In Sundays.
Zero.
Okay, not working Sunday. Okay, I just, could you point the direction of how traffic is going to go in, into and out of the building? I'm trying to visualize how this is going to work.
Yeah, so from 117, they'll come up Tanzania Road, they'll enter the site here, they'll pass over the inbound scale, they'll drive up into this area, back into any one of these five rail bays. They'll leave the building, wrap around, way out on the outbound scale.
Okay, so we're going to go.
And then leave back out to the.
In the back of the building for traffic.
Yep.
So that's going to be noise.
Yeah, and we did studies. The noise study that we did looked at used data from another facility that operates at the same tonnage applied that those noises and those ranges to this site, and we meet DP's noise policy.
Well, at this time, I mean.
Yeah. And again, and again, just.
The tunes will come out when this happens.
Right, right. And I believe our site assignment requirements is that we need to do a sound study once we start operating.
And where's Calza?
Calza's over here. So we do have, as I was mentioning, there's a 25-foot hill here to where the pavement is, where the trucks are going to be circulating.
So that hill will bounce any, that's above.
Yeah, so that's going to send.
So what happens is more noise, it'll kick it up. Definitely essentially the same as a sound barrier. Okay? And typical sound barriers are only 12 to 13, yeah?
It'll be shorter.
And if you're going to have trees and stuff, they'll absorb that, that noise.
Yeah, there was, there's pretty, some pretty tall trees on the top of that hill, and we're going to be, we're going to be planting more trees here.
And you know how many of the trees are going to pop in?
Yeah. Okay, CSX, I grew up in that area. And the tracks, I know they, he says they're going to fix them. The tracks are unsafe as it stands. Unsafe. Please walk there and view it yourself. And they're really lax. You can't tell the train company what to do. I know we had issues with the mats on Litchfield Street getting torn up. They wouldn't even respond. The city had to fix the mats where they existed. It's just that railroad company is, is very lax. I'm not for it, I just want to make my point.
Just to give you an idea, on the, on the railroad road, the National Railroad Act back in the 20s, in the, in the teens, in order to get railroad in many places across the country, the federal government.
Sort of like the Civil Combat Act of 86, you mean?
They, they gave away the store, let's put it that way. And so the, what cities and towns have over railroad is very difficult. And we found that just in the process when we're trying to do a rail trail and trying to deal with the railroad on an abandoning, an abandoned line that they'll never use again, and how difficult they can be. So you're not alone, really, with the railroad.
And for him, you're lying on the CSX, it's going to be a joke, honestly.
Yeah, I know, but that's.
So it's going to be back on, loading in on trucks, and back taking out by truck? So it's gonna be back on, loading in on trucks, and back taking out by truck, and it's more traffic.
Well, that's an assumption that we can't.
Yeah, I know.
He says this, you have.
I, I, you know, I'm not CSX, so I'm not.
No, I realize that.
I'm not even gonna begin to like say that I can make any commitments for them. I do know that they have budgeted on their books, early next year, to start to rehab the spurs from Lemonster to Framingham, I do know that that is a project that they have said to me. Now, I can't enforce them to commit that, and I would never commit anything to Frank that I can't commit to, but I do believe, you know, when we talk about noise, it's an industrial park, we're surrounded by industrial buffers, and that's going to involve some kind of truck trips, and we, as I have outlined, have a relatively low amount of truck trips in comparison to something that would go in like a FedEx or something, it could have 2,000 or 3,000 truck trips. We're also not an industry that has, you know, 80,000 square feet with, with air conditioning units and other types of units on the roof going, you know, meeting just below the sound ordinances and thresholds, I think that, you know, I know that, I understand, and I can see, you know, if you have 35 acres there, your preference is nothing to happen, but it's not, it's, now the parties that have owned the land have, you know, come to, you know, finally, come to some forms of agreement, and it's, something is gonna happen there, and I think that we are very responsible people in the way we approach things, and I hope that people have seen that, and, you know, everyone has my cell number, and I'm gonna, you know, walk them through and continue to, you know, make sure that we're helping and assisting in any way.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I live right across the street from.
Identify yourself, please.
Steven Lane, 644 Lancaster Street, right across from the restor in Lemonster.
Yeah, right.
One of the busiest streets in Lemonster right now, and I'm not, I'm not just saying this because, I mean, that's a great idea, I love this idea, but sometimes I have traffic from my house to Mexico, it's stocked, but I'm not kidding, I wish I was lying, I'm just saying, in the wintertime, the blizzard was set 19 on 2015, the dump trucks went by my house 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM to remove the snow. How, okay, my question is, he says the city's gonna be allowed to use that transportation, they're gonna be going right by my house, I guess I got one, should I get two choices? Live with it, or leave?
Right. Yeah, that's true.
I look right there.
Yeah.
The busiest.
Well, we can do, we could do something like that, within the city, and we have a city council in here.
And one more thing.
What we can do is in that area, especially, I know, where you're coming down the hill towards Melbourne, and when you're making that sweep, a lot of the trucks use their truck brakes, and so you hear that, whoa, 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 whoa.
And the street too, the street's horrible there.
So, that's one of the things, is in the truck brakes, the city could, and you petition your city council, they can take and put up a sign not to use truck brakes in that area, and that will help reduce a lot of your noise, but that's something after the fact, you know, it's not anything that we can do, that's a city council.
We implement that as a company, just, when we're near a residential area, we do it on exits, and the thing that I would wanna just say, mention too, is that, when you look at the layout of Lemonster, you have the one, you have the, you have the junction on 117, you have the mechanic street exit, you have the 12 exit through 13 exit, you have the South Street exit, you know, me, I started with one truck, and I picked up the city of Lemonster, we're talking about three trucks that pick up the whole city's waste.
Going right down 117.
And they, and they, at best make a load and a half, and what I'm saying is, any truck driver is gonna go to the highway system and come in off of 117, or try to drive through, they just wouldn't wanna drive through the middle of the town and deal with the.
Right, the traffic.
But, and the ones that are there are already there.
Right. One more thing, and I'll, I'll say another word. From Hanaford all the way to Walmart, just drive that road, horrible, horrible. One of the trucks don't make more noise on the road, has nothing to do with your facility, I agree, your facility's gonna be nice and quiet, but getting there and coming back, it's gonna be an issue.
I think majority of your traffic will come from 190 though, won't it?
It won't drive by his house, but to his point, he's just talking about, you know, I think 90, my guess, I can commit to this, is over 90% is gonna come from that direction.
That'd be my guess though.
Let's see, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is too easy, I don't know if you know it that way.
Yes, sir.
Jim Simmons, 6 Melbourne Street, I mean, what's to stop trucks from going up Melbourne Street, that's right in service?
We would have a restriction on that, okay, and if we had to, we can block off Aspenwall or Melbourne.
What can I do, I'm, what, I'll.
No, you talked to Mr. LaScotti, who owns the property over there.
We actually have a condition that we can't use Melbourne, and we have to, before we even, we have to negotiate what the, the protocol will be with the Board of Health in order to be able to enforce that, so like, the first thing I did was say, trucks should not be on Melbourne.
That's right.
To me, that was a no-brainer, they should go up Tansio, why would I wanna have some trucks, I really don't wanna disrupt your quality of life, and that's a no-brainer, the trucks should not be on Melbourne, and we know that, and what we do is we penalize people, you know, the first time some guy did it on a GPS, you know, you might not, you know, that, that, can it happen? I'm not gonna say it can't, but we have to have a procedure to make sure it stops, it's the same people that use the facility repetitively. Once you tell a guy he can't use the facility, that affects his job and, and his placement in his company, and we have mechanisms to do that.
Just to let you know, years ago, there was a proposal to go up Melbourne to Aspenwall, okay, and we did all the grades and engineering for that. We found, this board found, that that was an unsafe condition, primarily because of the grades on 117. It's that, that curve is actually banked, and when the truck comes down there, that truck can't make that turn.
Right, I can't, I always, I get a camper, and I always have to go down to a nearby, because I bought them up.
They'll, they'll do it once, they won't do it again, so, but that's what we found, so, the board is well aware of that, that's a restriction, and like I said, somebody gets lost, we see it all the time, but he'll do it once, and he won't do it again.
Yeah, 'cause I know my other concern too is when, you know, before when you had waste management, you know, we had to pick up trucks, you know, bring yard waste and stuff, you know, I'd be out on Lancaster Street picking up rubbish and yard waste, you know, stuff all the way up there, you know, when you have residents, you know, you're saying it's strictly commercial?
It is.
Okay, so.
And we're reasonable about, like, how do problems get created? We learn that, you know, and we have a guy at the door, and like I said, inspectors, so, you don't let a truck leave with stuff hanging on the edge, and that's how you'd have a problem, and that's, you know, that's how we manage things.
They're pretty much just roll-offs.
And packers that are completely enclosed.
Yeah, but not rubber trucks, there's no rubber trucks.
Yeah, they could be, they could be going in there, yes.
I do believe that the right-hand turn restriction is the condition of our Board of Health, I was like.
Right.
Yeah.
And that'll keep people going to 190, not coming to 10.
Yeah. That is a restriction on that highway. Okay, on 117, turn into Melbourne. Do I have anyone else out there?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's George Hurry, I live at 5 Ruth Street, and I would like to see where, on the bottom map, I'd like to see where the corner of Ruth and Calza, I mean, there's a fire road there, and why wasn't that included on the map? On the, that, while I was referring to the big bottom map there, it's like, he goes, oh, this is Fratassalee.
Oh, yeah.
And then our.
This is Fratassalee.
Yeah, Fratassalee's, we call that out here, is right here.
Right, and so there's a whole neighborhood back there?
Yeah.
Calza?
Yeah.
Ruth, Columbus?
Yeah.
We're right on the tracks.
Yeah, so you're probably in one of, are you on Ruth, one of these houses here?
Yeah, right on Ruth.
Yep, so.
We're right on the tracks, my backyard is the tracks, those tracks, I'll agree with Frank 100%, they're in terrible condition, terrible, have you seen them?
Yes.
Awful, they can't even fix Litchfield Street, that's been like that for years. I would say put the whole thing on hold till something's done with the tracks. That's what I would say. And why, we can't make noise till 7:00, how can you start at 6:00? Isn't, isn't it a town ordinance, you can't make noise till 7:00? We live right near the condos, those people can't come get their dumpsters emptied till after 7:00.
The condos.
I don't know about that ordinance, I'd have to, well, we can look it up. That would be Board of Health requirement.
They were gonna be open 24 hours, so.
They were gonna be open 24 hours.
I know.
Okay, we've cut them back to 6:00, and, well, the plan is, just like you, we, we try to do things, we try to accommodate people both ways, and we accommodate, try to accommodate the homeowner and the new business, 'cause if we don't get businesses in town, you know, our taxes go up and things happen. So sometimes you add, so what we try to do is mitigate it the best that we can by adding trees and buffers and, and making sure that the, that the natural, the best way is with trees, and they absorb the, also, there's a hill that's gonna be from where the facility is up to the back.
I walked that property many times.
So you're gonna look, when you look from county, you're gonna be looking over the top of this building.
This is on Ruth.
But from where, on Ruth, right in that area, so you're gonna be probably looking over the top of the building, and that will shoot most of the noise up. I mean, and as far as the railroad, we have no control over that.
These are the condos that I think that she's referencing, that are right behind A I S that operates 24/7, and we're, you know, we're in an industrial zone that.
Yeah, that's remember, that is an indu, that's one of our problems that we try to do, is this is one of the situations that has happened over the years, but typically, we try not to have industrial zones and residential areas of one another, all good planning. So most of them, when we rezone or rezone, it was, we try to have either a business or something in between the industrial zone and residential, but some of these homes and these things were done way before we had plenty, done in the 60s, I don't know when your house was built.
1900.
Yeah, so, they had no clue of what zoning, in fact, all of that land at that time was unrestricted, you could've had an asphalt plant behind your house, so, and I remember just changing that, and we only changed that, maybe 25 years ago.
And we did do the noise study, not just ours, but that, but the request, and then the D P opined on that, but then the city of Lemonster hired their own consultant.
Yeah, and we've had the consultants from the Board of Health, and the Board of Health, who deals with that noise and stuff, they were already given their approval to that, okay.
This is John Nelson, the lifelong resident of Lemonster, lived many areas in Lemonster, okay, I was at the planning board, being with Scott, Scott's a good friend of mine, I've known for years, and I bought that property, I bought that Tansio Park, okay, with Scott, and I saw the buffer, I saw the natural buffers over there, I saw the team that he has placed, put in place, and how this happened, you know, it took us 25 years to get going with 190, you know, and then 25 years to kill it or whatever, you know, forever, this thing's been proved since 2009, okay, he's got an ideal situation, ideal situation to have something good for the city of Lemonster, now, like you said, with his royalties to Lemonster, he's gonna give like a million and a half dollars a year in taxes, okay, to the city of Lemonster, you know, I think it's just positive, yes, I don't live there, I've lived across from Solar Chemical, I've lived across from Sportsman Plastics, I've lived across from Commonwealth Plastics, and Bearbone Plastics, I've lived off of 13, and Nightingale, okay, I've, I've lived quite a bit in the city of Lemonster, okay, and so I, I get it, I understood it, our fabric of our community is industrial, is commercial, and is residential, you know, and I just noticed, and hearing Scott and seeing this in, over the, about here now, okay, what he's put together, he said, I think it's a good fit for Lemonster, you know, we walk here, okay, I think it's a good fit, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Do I have anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Peter DiNini, Willow Street, Lemonster, known Scott for a long time, I think what he's proposing is a home run for the city, based on what he's gonna bring for the tax base, not only that, I've seen his facility out in Millbury last summer, and clearly amazed on how well landscaped it was, I think that's gonna be a plus for the, for the area and the, you know, surrounding residents, and not only that, more importantly, being a disposal contractor, this area is in real bad need of another site, another facility to take the trash and to dispose of it. I currently take some of my trash, I don't like to, but my hands are tied, so, again, we are in a crisis all, all through New England, and I think this would be a great acquire for the city of Lemonster, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have anyone else? Yes, sir.
Rick DiMarzio, Crest, and the building right next to, the house right next to Crest, I wanna say something tongue-in-cheek, this is a nice facility as they're presenting it, okay, and it's gonna be beautiful property, this last assessment, from the Shell Station to Walmart, land values on Lancaster Street for industrial and commercial went up 125% overnight, okay, up Tansio Road, they went up 125%, and I'm saying this tongue-in-cheek, until you hit Carter Hill and Raylano, and they didn't go up 125%, it's such a nice facility, are we footing the bill? That's all, there's something move tongue-in-cheek.
Do I have anyone else, it's just, board members.
Can I, can I respond to?
Yes.
The young lady's question about the time, so, the 7:00 AM, 7:00 AM start time has to do with the erection, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building, any excavation in regards there too, and it can go until 9 o'clock Monday through Friday, 8:30 until 5:00 on Saturday, 1:00 to 5:00 on Sundays, so, in terms of the construction of his building, he can't start until after 7:00, in terms of the operation of his building after it's been constructed, he can start as long as his noise, he can start before 7:00 AM, as long as the noise isn't unreasonably excessive, now, and I guess that remains to be seen, and if it is, that's when, you know, parties can complain to the city of Lemonster or the police department, but he cannot start construction until after 7:00 AM. You want?
Okay, thank you, Carol. Do I have any other? Okay, good. Do, what's the, which is of the board?
I'm, I'm supposed to hear.
Yes, I can.
Okay, you have to close each one?
I will.
Okay.
I moved to, which one did we open first, the site plan?
The public meeting, the public hearing.
Oh, the special, the site plan, I moved to close the site plan petition.
I have a motion made and seconded, made by Carol, seconded by Sil, to close the site plan, any further discussion. Here are none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye, opposed, say no, motion carries.
Move to close the application for special permit, public hearing.
Second.
I have a application to close the public hearing for 200 Tansio Road for special permit, motion by Carol, seconded by Sil, any further discussion. Here are none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no, motion carries.
I can make a motion and pull the action.
Denied. All right, we'll be getting back to this later in our agenda, we have another public hearing.
We have another hearing after this.
Thank you, and sorry.
Okay, this is a continued public hearing with special permit approval for work, the flood control here on Village Roach Avenue, I'd open the hearing. And I have, and the second one is a public hearing for a special permit approval for open space community development for Pierce Pond on Roach Avenue. Okay, both hearings are open for Roach Avenue. Do I have a representative?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
It's already 8:10.
Hell.
That's slow.
Okay, you have a presentation to make?
More informal. So when we last left off with the board.
Please stand and identify yourself. So you've done this a lot.
Well, I'm Chris Anderson with Canyon Engineering, here at the Pierce Pond Realty Trust for work within, a special permit for work within a flood plain, that's an open space development. We currently have been before the board for the flood plain special permit and went through that process or a conversation regarding that. We left off that meeting with concerns from conservation relative to flood plain compensation. The board may remember that during that previous meeting, there was some discrepancies between the flood plain compensation from the past Conservation Commission and the current commission. As such, we've rectified the issue, and the commission has issued a extension to the all the, those who had tense order conditions that were issued for the project. So relative to the flood plain concerns, those have been addressed, and copies of the order of conditions with the changes to the actual flood plain has been provided with our common response to the various department head review. In addition to that, during the conversation, it was agreed upon that a filing for an open space special permit would be reestablished for the project. Due to various reasons, these parties never really got going within the last couple of years. The special permit had a two-year timeframe on it, and this time it has expired. So in order to move forward with the project, we have agreed to file for that additional special permit in order to allow for the construction of the project. Relative to the open space, it's more concern relative to the actual use of the lots and the dimensional requirements of it. So the board may remember this subdivision and the modifications that came with it came through the board and got approved in a door storm during, in 2016, at which time the reduction in the lots and various other requirements, including stormwater management and the flood plain issues and conservation requirements were made at that time. So we're pretty much just requesting a reissuance of the same permit. Plans have not changed minus the minor modifications to the flood plain compensation areas. Beyond that, it's the intent to construct the plans that were originally approved back in 2016. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
On the conservation, primarily, what were the changes that they required? Replication, wasn't it?
Yes. So back in 2016, the commission that was in place at that time deemed the, there was a slight decrease in the compensation area in the higher elevations, but we had a substantial increase in the lower elevations. So by logic, the flood plain wasn't going to increase, but it did violate part of the Quality Protection Act. There's a net loss of about 17 cubic feet, which was not much, but 2020 hindsight, that probably should have been addressed back in 2016. So as such, we provided additional calculations and redrew the plans in order to accommodate that extra 17 cubic feet of loss. Just for reference, merely just excavated an extra two feet, you know, it was already previously approved. So this area will be located within conservation easement. And during the extended permit hearings, we also came up with a decision to place some line boulders along the easement for the permanent demarcation of that restriction area so that the future homeowners don't start naturally approaching to that area. That easement will be recorded within the deed, so there's no excuse for the future homeowner to not know of restrictions in that area.
Board members, do I have any questions from the board? This is a point of the...
Did we get any kind of, I mean, we were looking for homeowners association, draft as well. We still have that condition.
A little bit connected, that would be...
Special permit, yeah.
That would be required, that we have that all in place.
Already.
Prior, you know.
So that's with the prior.
Yes.
Right. That should have been.
It's part of the original special permits.
Right.
Yeah.
And that we can't prepare it for our two construction.
No traffic issues.
We have received mass DOT approval for the opening and the markings and the technical connections. So they have reissued that permit, so we're fine with that now too.
Looking at all our research. So everything stands as we had done originally? So I think we're all just, we're just, the time matter, right?
Sorry, text is good, it's not actually going.
Do we have any idea what the time kind of plan you have for this now? This year sometime?
You said it last year.
Yeah, he said last year, he said we're going to do it.
We're going to do it this long. I just, I just walked a little house on the end. You guys remember that?
Yep.
Because, um...
On the right?
Oh, the, oh, okay.
On the left on the water and it's in tough shit.
Oh, the, oh, okay. Yeah, that one would be it.
So we're going to renovate that one so it doesn't look so bad. We, we, when, we had a situation with beavers there. I don't know if you ever heard about it.
Oh.
So I went in, it was basically to help the city of Pittsburgh, and there's a neighbor that had backed up onto their property. Didn't really impact us, but so we agreed to that. They came right to see it.
Can't mess with it.
So we did it, we reluctantly did it. And then...
Had to get a permit.
We got a permit from the Conservation Commission to remove the be of the dam, which we did. That's all done and then approved and inspected. We cleaned up a quite a lot of trash that had gotten brought in by people over the years. We, you know, and then...
Excuse me, sir, could you please identify yourself?
Oh, excuse me. Peter Bovensey, trustee of Pierce Pond Realty Trust. I apologize.
That's all right.
So, you know, we're, we're working with a couple of other neighbors. There's a person who bought the house on the corner. He seems like a very nice person. He's trying his best to try to renovate it. It had been, we're closed on it, and somebody had raided the plumbing or the copper out of it. So that was good, that. And we're going to renovate the other house, and we're going to fix that intersection. Right now, it's like half the size it should be. Once the radius is getting, it should be that safe. For everybody, the people that are already there, a few of the lots are building. It's a bit, really not much going on.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board? Anyone from the audience have any questions?
11 lots, Chris. How many lots?
No, no.
I got the coat.
There was originally, there were 12.
12, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
And then I went to go do it. And one of the lots I thought was a little bit, I could show you, and you already dealt with this. There was some of the confusion with the building department. They were looking at the old plane. They didn't realize we came back in 17, and we decided to eliminate two lots. One of the lots would have pinned the house up against the highway. It is felt that wouldn't be that desirable for that house owner. And it also would have opened up the highway to the rest of the development. And the other lot was really this previous lot that would have, you know, so, I think it would expose too much of the pond to the houses, that the people who made, looking from inside the pond. So I decided to just turn that into one lot. So I eliminated two lots voluntarily from a previously approved plan. Didn't affect the open space or anything, but I just got rid of it. So this is the same as the last plan, same number of lots?
So, well, the reason I ask is because we have our conditions of approval. I think, well, the existing site is located in the northern end of Pierce Pond, an open space plan, an open space subdivision plan has previously been approved for a 12-lot subdivision. As part of the new subdivision plan, the applicant revised several lot lines and decreased the number of total lots from 12 to 10.
Correct.
As well as minor revisions to the drainage system. All 10 lots should be part of the homeowners association. So I mean, if it's more than that, then we have to...
So it's 10.
It is 10.
This year, it does agree.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
I have a motion.
Make a motion, close the hearing. Second.
Close the public hearing for special permit.
Oh, which one? Flood plain?
Special permit.
Hold on, flood plain. Have a motion by Fred, seconded by Tom. Excuse me. Any discussion? Here are none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
Make a motion, close the hearing for special permit.
Have a motion made and seconded. To close a special permit, any discussion? Here are none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Call to order.
Patrick Carlock.
Here.
Fred Fredericks.
Yeah.
Paul Eisler. Excused. Sam Torcicani.
Here.
John Susan.
Here.
Carl Vittorio.
Here.
Thomas Carrigan.
Hey, we're all here. No, no. Okay, minutes of previous, May 6 meeting.
Be ready.
That's fine.
Plans submitted, A.I. approval, Johnny Appleseed Lane, for map fossil 375-1B.
Move to put at the end of the agenda.
Oh, you're tough, Carol.
There is a record report on that.
Good evening. My name's Steve Dowd from Milton and Dinger. The A.I. has showed six lots on Johnny Appleseed Lane. They are three lots per, there are two parcels that are owned by the Unison and McGeal Realty Trust that were subdivening the three parcels. Just as a point of reference, lots 1, 2, and 3 surround the Johnny Appleseed Monument on that line. So it's like, it's not that far off on the left-hand side.
Get a move on the body.
Comments? They all have the appropriate lot size, okay. Motion to endorse?
Second.
It's just, it's just...
80?
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah, probably 150, 150.
Motion by Sal, seconded by Carol to endorse. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor, endorse and say aye. Opposed, say no. Project to endorse.
Oh, no, that market's still safe.
That market's safe there.
He's going to have to hunt those.
I went by there yesterday.
The first plot had, yeah, Leamester.
He moved Johnny personally.
Yep, I did. It's been many a night with Johnny. Johnny, what?
Okay, who is this? Continued special permit approval for work in the flood plain for Pierce Pond Village.
I make a motion to issue the special permit with the original conditions outlined in from May of 2017, is it?
16, 16, right, for the special permit.
I second that.
Yep.
Motion by Carol, seconded by Tom.
Actually issued August of 2016.
August of 2016. Okay.
But a new plan was added May of 17, wasn't it? It's not, that's, I know it's true, okay. Never mind.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 25 Tucker Drive, site plan approval.
You're on second, Doug.
Have a motion made and seconded on Tucker Drive. Do we have any conditions, additions, or deletions?
Comply with all department rules.
It's pretty cutting, Doug.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty straight, I know.
Nobody needs it. That's fine. No one's going to see it.
Yeah.
No waivers.
Yes. No waivers, that's right. Okay. Motion by Carol, seconded by...
I mean Fred, seconded by me.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. 5.2, 200 Tansio Road for site plan approval.
What were the two waivers?
They were on the site plan.
Yeah, I know. You're on the site plan.
They're on the site plan.
What were the site plans?
Section 22.
The lights?
Tree removal?
Yes.
You want, you want more trees than we are offering.
Tree species.
Increasing tree species.
Yep, and the 76-degree.
And then the 90 versus 76 on the...
Do with the sections?
On the lighting.
Sure.
Section 22-62.2.1, that's the lighting.
22...
Dash 62.2.1.
Okay.
And then the one regarding trees is 22-62.3.6.
Okay. So, because we have to, this is my take, we have to do the waivers first before the...
Yeah.
So, but I will say this, and this also, this actually applies more to the special permit, but I'll just say it now to say it once. So this is a waste site facility, and it's protected under Chapter 48, Section 9, if they're in, if the facility is in industrial zone and it receives a site assignment. It's in a designer, it's in an industrial zone, and it has received such a site assignment. So it's almost kind of like exempt, but we can impose conditions. And I know that we have a few, or we have some.
Just those two.
So, but I also have to say, I mean, I realize they kind of have to do this for the site assignment, but we usually are the ones who impose the developer or the applicant to, to go out, to, we get them to have independent consultants at their own cost. They did that, they were offset when they come to the voters.
Yeah.
And we could have had a lot more about us complaining about this. And no one actually ever really complained. Mr. Britt Grousey just wanted to assure what they discussed was part of it, and that was smart of him, and we're going to make those conditions. And, but, I mean, I don't think you can ask for, I mean, is traffic going to be an issue? I don't, I don't know. They, their traffic study doesn't show. And if, if it's an industrial zone, and they're going to put an industrial building in there, that's going to have more than eight employees going in, there's going to be much more burden there.
Could be 200 employees.
So...
Well, it's not just the employee, it's the truck traffic too, but it's not a... Well, it's not just the employee, it's the truck traffic too, but it's not, they took the construction.
One of the restrictions is a right turn only.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, so we'll do, but we'll do the waivers first, but I just wanted to say, even though they have this exemption of protection under Section Nine of the, of the stat- state statute, and the reason they do that is because no one's gonna want a solid waste factory anywhere, so it has to go somewhere, and I think this is a great spot for it. But notwithstanding that exemption, the applicant has done a great job in probably presenting the best possible plan he does. So, with that said, with the waivers, with, I, I make a motion to approve, um, for the waiver for twenty-two dash sixty-two point two point one, the lighting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the lighting. Any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And I make a motion to approve, uh, the request for the waiver for, um, Article twenty-two dash sixty-two point three point six for the tree species.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the tree species. Any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And I make a motion to approve the site plan with, um, the following, with all department head comments, including...
What's that condition?
The conditions of the time of operation, the time and days of operation.
I motion to approve...
And, and then the right turn only or no access to Melbourne, and then there was another one. Of course, I can't find... What's that?
No, it wasn't, it was...
Well, that was discussed, I don't know if we wanted to, that would go to the city council.
It was one, oh, no, that was it, hours of department review, hours of operation, and no access to Melbourne.
Okay. Yeah, there was no right, right turn, you say, the restriction? I didn't think so.
Yeah, uh, right turn only, right turn, Tanzio. Which I think they're almost included, no?
No, it's, it's a right hand turn, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, right hand turn out of the facility onto Tanzio.
Out of the facility, not onto...
Why would everybody go left?
Well, they would end up on Melbourne. No, 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 no.
You gotta be able to go left on...
You gotta be able to left on one seventeen.
You could start a pickup.
It's a right turn only on the industrial road, on Tanzio Road.
But most of that job is still...
And they didn't even, that wasn't, the board has a condition, basically, was saying, you need to use Tanzio Road to utilize the facility. A right-hand turn out of the facility, I mean, I guess, you know, if you were using one of the, the neighboring property, it would be different, but the, the condition was set so that we did not use Melbourne.
Okay. So, we have that motion, was a right-hand turn off of, onto Tanzio Road, okay? The trees and the lighting.
No, 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 we didn't.
No, that's what we included.
And no access to Melbourne.
And no access to Melbourne. Okay.
May I, the hours, it's their delivery hours, so that's, the board has a, you know, it's clarifying, that's what happens in this industry, you have to be able to clean the facility and still maintain.
You can still work.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay.
They can still work, they're delivery hours.
Okay, delivery hours, to find out the delivery hours. Yeah, the maintenance truck comes in.
All right, nine hours of operation, delivery hours, six AM to seven PM.
And, uh, seven to three, what's that? Yes, seven PM on Saturday.
Okay, any further discussion?
In closing, Sundays.
Tom, seconded.
Closing on Sundays.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, five point three, 200 Tanzio Road for special permit approval for, for use.
I make a motion to issue the special permit with the same conditions as the site plan.
Motion made by Carol, seconded by Tom. Any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, good luck.
Five point four, special permit approval for open space community development for Pierce Pond Village on Roach Avenue.
No, that was the other, that was for the, um, floodplain. Make a motion to, um, issue the special permit with the same conditions as issued in August of 2016.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Do I have any communications that you wish...
Good luck, Peter.
Good luck, bring it forward.
I have something from the emergency, it's just a house TV matter.
Was that you, Tom? Are you the representative for the emergency?
Yeah, I had a tough time trying to do that.
Well, basically, what they want is they want me to fill out a form designating the name and contact information of a person who's going to be designated, and they want it to be from July 1st to June 30th, 2020, and I think we made this at the beginning of the year for the year, but that's not where they're...
We're still in April.
I haven't pulled out to be Tom, if you're okay with that? I'll sign it and I'll turn it in.
Okay.
Just every time they'll meet and something happen.
Hey, I went to everyone when it was my turn, I just want you to know that.
Okay.
Get out of diapers.
Way to get out of diapers. Anything else I need to communicate? No, direct report.
You can get a report on every single application separate. So, what I do is I do an initial review, and that goes in with department head comments, but then I give the application, applicant time to make corrections or respond, and then I do a second round of review that's directed to the board, and, um, that was one topic that happened, yep.
Right. Except that, I didn't know if you had anything else that you want, that wasn't associated with the, these meetings or...
Not today.
Did you, well, you had a comment when, um, I can't, I can't remember, is it Anna Osteza?
Johnny Appleseed.
I thought, did you have a comment about that, about John? Were you gonna say something?
I, I just had a memo, I had a report on that, and you got it in your package.
Oh, okay, never mind. Never mind.
Don't say this again.
None?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
All right, we absolutely...